All right. Good evening and welcome to the town of Cordera Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, September 26, 2023. Would you please call the roll?
I'm going to call the roll today. Commissioner Kenny, Mr. Boshier, Commissioner Chase, Commissioner Rizzo, Commissioner Bandell.
Thank you. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we go to public comment tonight, I would like to introduce to the commission and to the public the new head of the Community Development Department, Amy Lyle. Would you care to say anything, Amy?
Yeah, I'll hand it over to Amy in just a minute. I just want to say how excited I am to welcome Amy to the town of Cordera Madera and to our staff. And we're just really excited to have Amy join our team. Amy comes to the town with almost 20 years of prior experience in the planning, planning world, both in the county of Sonoma and most recently for the last three and a half years with the city of Santa Rosa. And so I just hope, I know you all share with me that we just look forward to working with Amy and welcoming her to our town and to the commission, to the work we do here. And with that, I'll hand it over to Amy. So welcome, Amy.
Yeah, I'm really feeling blessed to be here and happy to join this great team. And yeah, and I also really enjoy working with boards and commissions. So I'm excited to work with you all and help you and resource you as best as I can. So yeah, with that, I'm looking forward to future meetings.
Oh, that's great. Thank you very much. Yeah. And under Adam, all things are possible. That's great. All right. Thank you. So now, as always, we open the meeting to public comment for that which is not on the agenda. Anybody commenting has three minutes to do so. Is there anyone in the room that would like to comment for something that's not on tonight's agenda? All right. Oh, yes. Would you step up to the microphone, please, and turn it on? Percy, I don't have my timer up.
I just wanted to say thank you to our Little League Twin Cities team champions that went all the way. And had they been a year older, they might have been the world champions and Cordera Madera might have had the world champions instead of El Segundo.
That's worthy. All right. Thank you. Percy, do you have anybody online?
I do, Chair Chase. Carlo has his hand raised. Go ahead, Carlo, you should be able to unmute yourself. If the hand was raised in error, I can lower it for you.
The unmuting is not working or whatever.
Unmuted, but not speaking.
Okay, going once. Twice. All right. So sorry, Carlos. You could put your hand up in a moment here. Is there someone else? No? Okay. All right. Then we'll just, I'm sorry, we'll close the public comment section and we'll head directly to our meeting tonight on the new hearing. I'm sure Adam will introduce this. This is the short-term rental ordinance, a public hearing to consider recommendation to the Cordera Madera Town Council of a proposed ordinance establishing regulations for short-term residential rentals, including amendments to sections, numbers I won't call out, with transit occupancy tax, a chapter with zoning definitions and a section of permitted and conditional uses in residential districts, and adding a new chapter, 5.34, short-term rental licensing program. So we've heard this before, but Adam, how do you want to go?
I'm going to actually just turn this over to Bob since we're in the second meeting here and let Bob begin the presentation.
Oh, great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Chase and members of the commission. As you say, you've heard this topic before and in a lot of detail. So tonight's presentation will be somewhat abridged. Let's see. There we go. So what we'll cover tonight is just very briefly the process that we've had to date on this topic. And then I think it's important to really make sure we all understand what the proposed program is and what the regulations are. So I'll do a quick summary of those. And then we'll talk about the changes that we've made since the Planning Commission meeting on August 8th, based upon your suggestions. We'll field questions from the commission. You can hold a public hearing and then reach your recommendation to the council. So up to this point, we started this process a little over a year ago. We had a town workshop online regarding short-term rentals. And then from that point, we took the survey that we used at that workshop, put it online for about a month, and we received about 500 responses, which was actually very good for a survey like that. In October of last year, the commission discussed the survey results and the topic in general and gave us some feedback. The council then, as part of their strategic planning discussions in February, concluded that they really wanted to have staff deal with the issue once and for all, and asked us to go forward with additional study and bringing forth a possible ordinance for consideration. And then in April of this year, the council again discussed the item and gave us some initial feedback, things to consider. We shared that with the Planning Commission as we drafted an ordinance at your August 8th meeting. And we had a lot of feedback from the commission. And we've since incorporated a fair amount of that into the proposal. So to summarize what the program really looks like, want to make clear to the commission and the public that the proposed licensing program for short-term rentals only involves single-family residences in the R1 district, not any multifamily districts or multifamily units. It also precludes an accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling unit from being used and rented as a short-term rental. Also precludes any deed restricted affordable units. And very importantly, it limits the number of rental days per year for each potential licensee to 75 days. And that's really intended to try to give some flexibility to property owners in terms of how they might use the property, but also at the same time, not create a real financial incentive for someone that might own a property just for the purpose of renting it as a short-term rental. We have occupancy limits built into the ordinance, two persons per bedroom. And then if there is common area that's also part of the rental, two additional potential guests. And very importantly, the ordinance incorporates a provision that says between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, only the folks that are on the rental agreement may be present at the property. So if there has to be enforcement, let's say by the police for a party situation, they can very quickly identify who's supposed to be there and who's not and deal with the situation rapidly. Parking requirements, the ordinance starts out by requiring the parking that normal single-family would, residents would be required, either two or three spaces based on size. And then if there's more than eight guests that are allowed for the rental based upon the number of bedrooms, then an additional parking space is required for each four of those occupants. And as part of the licensing program, the application process, the applicant has to submit a parking plan showing where those spaces are so that staff can assure compliance with the code. The rental must provide a 20, an emergency contact that is located within 30 miles of the property capable of dealing with any situation that arises, and they have to be available 24/7. As part of the licensing program application process, the applicants are required to submit photographs of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms in the home to ensure that those are there. And then there's a lot of requirements for tenant information signage that would have to be present at the property. Everything from emergency contact information that we just talked about, the maximum number of occupants for that particular property, the number of vehicles that are provided and where they're located. If there's a situation with a shared driveway with another property, there has to be an advisory not to block access to the other home. There's lots of information about garbage and recycling and composting information, phone numbers for the police and fire departments, a floor plan of the home showing the egress points and a vicinity map showing the area and evacuation routes from the home. There has to be sign-up information for local emergency alerts like Nixel. And there would have to be the address and phone number of the closest 24-hour emergency medical facility in case that arises. And also information about the town's noise ordinance. Then there are requirements for the hosting platforms that are built in. They have to verify that a listed unit on their platform has a valid town license. There has to be a notice provided to renters of the town's regulations regarding short-term rentals. The hosting platform would have to remit the transit occupancy tax payments to the town. And the hosting platform would have to retain data for three years if the town so requested as part of their enforcement actions. In terms of administration of the program, these permits would be issued on a calendar basis for one year. And so there have to be annual renewals and reapplication. The town would hire a third-party monitoring service. So they monitor all listings for Cordera Madera all the time and can identify those listings by address. There will be a designated staff person that can provide information, take complaints and maintain the registry of approved licenses. And the town would have a webpage that would have that register of licensed short-term rentals, a map of where they're located, resource information, both to the public and to owners, and then also how to file complaints. And then in terms of code enforcement, the annual audit would occur on about 10% of the licensed properties. And that would include an onsite visit to verify compliance with the program regulations. There's a provision for revoking the license based upon code enforcement and violations. And then the violations could be addressed through the town's existing public nuisance procedures or administrative citation provisions. And those have been modified based upon the commission's suggestions on August the 8th. And let me then walk you through those. So based upon the discussion the commission held, we've made a number of changes to the ordinance. The most important, I think, is in terms of the eligibility of the properties. The ordinance now contains a provision that a licensee can only own one property in town. So someone could not buy up multiple properties, obtain multiple licenses, and that includes a business entity as well. Parking, the exemption from the parking location standards that was in the original ordinance that would have allowed parking, for example, in setback areas, has been removed. And then the commission wanted to make sure that the neighborhood response groups were involved in the process as well. And so they will now be sent a copy of the annual registry. The emergency contact information for each property will be provided to the police department. And for properties in the wildland urban interface, the contact information for the local neighborhood response group contact will have to be provided as part of that signage. And the changes we made in terms of the administration of the program, we removed the provision that would allow redaction of the owner's name and address from the registry, which kind of made it rather pointless. So that's gone. And again, we increased the annual audit percentage from five to about 10% of the units. And we also added an evaluation of the program that would occur before the town council within a two-year period. And they would then have information about the number of licenses that have been issued, where they're located, what kind of revenues the program has generated, what kind of costs, and also if there have been any enforcement or safety issues involved. And so at that time, if the council felt the need, they could then direct staff to bring back modifications to the program, which would of course involve the planning commission as well. And then the enforcement section was fairly significantly rewritten by the town attorney based upon the commission's suggestions. So there's a clarification of the process that the community development director, the new community development director, would use in assessing those complaints, welcome to Cordera Madera, that clarifies that complaints can be filed either in writing or online or orally. It created an option, additional options for civil actions by the town to take against either owners of the properties or the hosting platforms. These could involve injunctive or monetary relief as well. And it also added the ability for private citizens to file civil actions as well. So with that, we'd be happy to respond to any questions. We received a couple of letters, including one from one of the hosting platforms. That raises some legal issues. We just received it. So the assistant town attorney has really just had a few minutes to look at it. And I think that some of those issues are probably things that could be addressed between now and the council meeting if need be. So with that, again, we're happy to respond to any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Bob. I think we'll start off and get the commissioners to ask questions of you and staff. And we will ask Amy to opine if she's ready on the issues. You know, she's fast. So with that said, yeah, it's a thorough revision. So thank you. I'm going to start over to my right with Valerie and see what she has to say about staff questions at this point.
Right. So I just have one question after reviewing all of the, and I think this is great. I think very clear document, a lot of revisions. So I think all of us are very grateful for your work here. So we'd like to start with that. And then the one question that I have in regards to the enforcements, will there be a list of clarifications under what specific circumstances these enforcements would be used? Like what methods would be used with the whole list?
Valerie, you mean the different enforcement mechanisms?
Yes, and different violations. So list of violations that where enforcement could be used. Yes, that's.
Well, that would, at least in the immediate term, be worked out probably between the community development director and the town attorney's office. Normally, one would use escalating punishment, and I believe that's provided for in here to some degree. But there is discretion left in the community development director to select the appropriate enforcement mechanism.
Okay, so it will be up to the town basically to determine. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Valerie. Are you asking like what are the possible violations or just?
Yes, I think from, there's a lot of clarification on how all of the enforcements will be taken. But I, it wasn't clear to me what violations are and, you know, how it will be determined when to complain and when not under which circumstances.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Over to you, Daniel.
Yeah, I would say the same thing. I really, I think, sent that Bob Brown, you were involved or the staff that, I think he did a great job responding to our comments. And I think, I think the, I think it's good. Most of my comments relate to the enforcement section and the timing of things. And if you look at 3.34.070, it refers to the director not having to inform the complainant within 60 days. It seems like a very long time if you have a rental where there's some issues of neighborhood disturbance or safety that, and you've complained about it, that you may not hear back for 60 days. It seems like 30 days would be a more reasonable time.
Then just to reiterate, questions for clarification at this moment?
So my question is, what's the basis for 60 days?
I got it. Okay.
I might as well go through them all. In the same section, item four, owner hosting or hosting a platform is violated, chapter three or more times and more, three or chapter three, or this chapter, three or more times in the prior 24 months. The third violation of any subsequent violation shall constitute a misdemeanor. My question is, where does revoking the license fall into this? In other words, would they be able to violate the terms and still not have their license revoked until, I mean, it's not clear, the relationship between this and revoking their license?
The misdemeanor section, which you first referred to, has fairly narrow circumstances that would trigger it. That's under subsection four of C. And meanwhile, the revocation provisions, that's a broader, if they're, if they're, that's a broader provision. If they're not current on TOT, if there are violations within a much longer period of time, such as you have, the misdemeanor happens if there are three violations within, I believe it's a year. And the revocation can happen if there are three violations within 24 months. So you have a longer period before that particular consequence would attach. Again, as soon as you, and then three and four are not present in the misdemeanor section at all. So they're for different types of violations and different severities of violations. Does that answer your question?
Actually, no. I don't understand the difference between the violations.
Okay, so if you go back to four.
Page?
It is page 14.
Four, okay. That's where I was, yeah.
Any violation of this chapter, oh, excuse me, I was wrong about the 24 months. Any violation of the chapter three or more times in the prior 24 months can be prosecuted as a misdemeanor. That's straightforward, simple. There are other bases for revocation further down in E section C. If you don't pay your taxes, you can get your license revoked for that. If you have three or more violations, instead of or in addition to the misdemeanor prosecution, you could have your license revoked. You could, the town could use either method of enforcement. If there have been untruths on the application, that would be a grounds for revocation. Or if you've tried to transfer your license to someone else without permission. But there are different bases for doing all of these things, except for the three violations within 24 months. And that's just an alternative method that the town could use in enforcing the ordinance.
Okay. And then I think the last, well, two more questions. Under DII, the reference to administrative hearing officer, how does that relate to the director?
So that if the director doesn't determine that there's no problem, then we switch to another section of the code for the administrative enforcement procedures. And that section of the code provides for a citation and the opportunity to contest the citation at an administrative hearing. So this is referring back, you see, to 905080. That's the administrative enforcement section. And if you don't have the, if the interested party, excuse me, if the town has not obtained a hearing officer decision regarding that administrative citation within 135 days, then at that point, the interested party, who's a private citizen, can file a civil suit if they so choose. But really, I understand this doesn't make a lot of sense unless you read it together with chapter 9.05.
And 135 days is part of that chapter? That's defined in that chapter?
No, this is in addition to what's in that chapter. That chapter doesn't contemplate there being somebody who is as nearly affected as a complainant here, although there may have been a complaint. This one is just giving a extra tool to the individual resident who's complaining about a problem with the short-term rental. That was part of what we did in response to the Planning Commission's comments on August 8th, when they wanted there to be a private right of action.
And 135 days, can you explain that? I mean, it seems that's a third of a year. I mean, is that, is that someone has to wait to get restitution a third of a year? So we made that up?
So we didn't exactly make that up. I mean, there has to be some period of time. I can tell you though, from my own experience, that the complaint is lodged. It can easily take a month or two to investigate it. Staff is already quite busy, as you know. At that, after they investigate it, if they find that there's a violation, staff issues a citation. The owner, property owner, has a particular period of time, I forget how long offhand frankly, to contest and ask for a public hearing. And then it can take several weeks to schedule that public hearing, to obtain a public hearing officer and schedule that hearing. So I know it seems like a shocking period of time and we could, I'd want to hear from staff on the administrative burden. I'm sure we could shorten it somewhat. But if you've ever been party to an administrative enforcement proceeding, it's not all that long.
Well, I'm just concerned about the effect on the affected homeowners, adjacent homeowners or whatever, you know, waiting 135 days for this period. So if it.
Sorry, if I may point out, these are short-term rentals. So presumably the troublesome tenant is long gone. And if there's a recurrence within 24 months, then we can just revoke the license under the previous provision that we were discussing. That doesn't mean that the, that the New Adult and Department couldn't pursue some other remedies as well. But they could immediately revoke the license once there's three violations in 24 months.
So the 135 days is standard or?
It's not standard because it's not standard to give the private parties the right of a private cause of action. So that is in and of itself unusual. That was my attempt to estimate a reasonable amount of time for the enforcement process to work its way through the system.
Yeah. And, and I think it is reasonable, I will say, to your first question, also the 60 days, that they get, there's a response. And I think that goes to the investigation of the actual complaint or accusation that's filed. And I know short-term rental enforcement is a challenging enforcement activity or investigative activity for staff. But it takes time. There's obviously hours that, you know, there's, there's, there's effort, significant effort to sort of build a case, and it's often not easy information to readily access. So you have to wait until there's actually something, a reservation, and then you may need to work to sort of build that base up. And I think 60 days is certainly reasonable for that investigative period by code enforcement. The rest of the process in terms of, I mean, this, to the point, this is, we've already, at this point, that's to determine whether or not there's a violation or not. And that's something that we can actually act and enforce going forward through the right rest of the process. So then you're into the notice of violation. And from that point forward, the person or the homeowner or whoever is doing or in violation is now on notice. And the neighbors know as well that this is now a process that there's a violation against this property owner. So, yeah.
So if, if you're a homeowner next to someone that's doing short-term rentals and there's partying and noise going into the late in the night and you file a complaint, then the week, end of the week, those people are gone. So what happens? Who, you investigate what happened last week and then file a complaint with the?
Yeah, so I think that would be documentation that we would, we would certainly want to see. And if there was a, we could have a time stamped audio recording or something like that that shows. stamped, uh, audio recording or something like that, that shows that this noise was happening in those hours. Um, the, the police report could be, uh, obviously would be called. It wouldn't be sort of something that you, you know, indicate to the, um, uh, uh, at that time to staff. But certainly that could also, I would see the pursuit as a violation of this particular ordinance under the way it's-
This chapter, this receiving, this section has a menu or, or cafeteria layout of different remedies which could be used in combination.
Yeah, sorry, I'd just say, I think that's a really important point because what we're trying to do here is give the town and the community development director flexibility to use the tools that are most effective at actually stopping what is going on. And that could be, it, it just depends on what it is, but there's a wide variety of things that could be going on. But noise is a different response or different potential enforcement action versus somebody missing or filling out the, the wrong form in an incorrect way.
The last question would be, and I don't know if this goes to, to Bob or who, but, um, the expedia group letter and, uh, what the issues are there and how, how we think we would respond.
At a chance to review the expedia letter and, and I have, uh, several responses. Under hosting platform responsibilities, I believe that the intention is that if there is a hosting platform collecting, um, money on behalf of the owner or other, uh, business entity, then it's appropriate for the hosting platform at the same time to collect the T O T. If there isn't a hosting platform involved, then it would be appropriate for the host, who would presumably be the owner to collect the T O T. So one or the other of them has to. And if there's a hosting platform involved, it should be the hosting platform. Um, and we can clarify that. Um, the validate, the next sentence, he says that the, um, three, four, oh, six, oh, C requires housing platforms to validate the permits. That's really not correct. They have to confirm that there is a permit, uh, a valid license for the short-term rental. Um, they argue that that should be a function of the code enforcement officers, but our code enforcement officers are not automatically going to know when a private homeowner has listed their property for a short-term rental on a hosting platform, whereas the hosting platform will know that. So they could set themselves up, we believe, to confirm that there is a valid license for that property. Um, I'm sure that there is some mechanism that they could do that short of just, of everybody having to call the planning department to verify it. There must be some easier way for them, but they are the ones in the best position to do it.
So we think that the ordinance as currently exists is is fine relative to their concerns?
I would probably modify the T O T provision to say that if, if there is no hosting platform, it is on the host to collect the T O T. But that's the only change I would recommend.
And I would only add that these two provisions are, are not unique to this ordinance. They're very common among these, these short-term rental ordinances. So, uh, again, I, I think it's, it's not unusual.
Thank you.
All right, Daniel, thank you. Um, then over here to, uh, Margaret. You have some questions.
I do. What? Okay, what gives Corte Madero the right to limit uh, a private action, uh, of some, uh, a, a private civil action? You've limited somebody's right to sue, basically, or to file, uh, a lawsuit. What? Where do we have the right to limit that?
So independent of this ordinance, one neighbor can always sue another neighbor for private nuisance. That's a right that we do not grant and we cannot take away. Uh, I understand that at the August eighth meeting, the, uh, commission asked for a separate cause of action relating to violation of this particular ordinance. And if we did not provide for that, the, there, no such action would exist. This is inside baseball a little bit, I realize, but all the, all the homeowner would have would be a, um, a nuisance cause of action, which might be powerful enough. But if they want to be able to sue also for violation of this chapter, this section gives them the right to do that. Without, without that provision, they wouldn't have the right to enforce it that way.
It seems like you have to jump through a couple of hoops here before you and wait a hundred and thirty-five days.
Well, yes.
Before you can, uh, do that.
Well, presumably, as I say, the police have already been called. The immediate disturbance has been taken care of. If a immediate disturbance continues to recur, then those, then you could use one of the other means, like private nuisance. You could renew your complaint. Um, but yes, you would be, end up, aside from the private nuisance, you would end up waiting for the town to take some sort of remedial action before you would be able to file your own lawsuit.
And could, um, would the town be uh, liable for bad enforcement or issuing a license to someone who didn't qualify? Would, could the town be sued?
No. Well, the town can always be sued for anything, uh, but I would not say that that's a viable cause of action.
Can't limit someone in California's right to sue, I mean.
Point.
Con- constitutional. Um, and then the other question I have is, um, what is the connection? I don't know, professional, business, whatever, between the Chamber of Commerce and the town. The money is being, is going to the Chamber of Commerce. Why?
So there was a, um, I'm gonna, hopefully, I know there was at least an ordinance, if not, I voted upon measure back in, I think, the late nineteen nineties that, um, provided that T O T tax, I believe two percent of the T O T tax that was collected would go to the Chamber of Com- Commerce, uh, to fund specific activities. And that's what's sort of listed in the code. Um, including the Fourth of July, um, celebration that the, the town, um, that the chamber puts on. Um, and so, uh, that's, that's basically where it comes from. That's the relationship. So there, there is that, um, uh, I, I believe it was a voted upon measure back in the late nineties where that was determined. And so that's what's in our code, that T O T text goes for that purpose.
All of it or two percent of?
No, 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 two, two percent.
Two percent of the total collected?
That's correct.
And where does the rest go?
Uh, to the town. Um, there is, and I wanna get this right, there's two percent, I believe, to the chamber. I think there's an, wanna say there's also two percent that goes to the county of Marin, um, chamber as well. Um, and then the rest goes to the town.
Okay, so the town would be getting ninety-six percent of collected, the collected.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm, no, it's, it's a, there's, uh, all right, there's a total of twelve percent on top of the fee, rental fee charged for, for a room. So there's a total of twelve percent T O T tax.
Oh.
Right? And so of that twelve percent, I'm saying two percent, two of the twelve, which is one-sixth, goes to the Chamber of Commerce in town. Believe another two percent, another sixth will go to, uh, the county of Marin, their chamber. And then the rest of that, um, goes to the town.
So how much is left for the discretion of the town?
That four-sixths, um, so two-thirds of the twelve percent that's added on top of the rental chart, of the rental rate per room.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Um, the P O T tax goes into the general fund or goes into a, a special account?
That's correct. That's the, the remaining portion of the T O T tax.
It goes to-
The general fund of the-
General fund.
Okay. All right, Mr. Rizzo.
Okay, I got a few questions. Just to, to, to finish up the conversation about nuisances, is there a list of nuisances, uh, that apply to these violations that someone can, or will, will they be distributed as a person gets their business license to operate so they know that these things are nuisances? That they can be listed, uh, you know, because some people might not know that they're a nuisance and they can be violations. Um, or is this, I'm, I'm just curious. I think that's kind of what everybody was getting at. Like, we don't know what a nuisance is and we don't know what a violation is. We're just calling them nuisances and violations.
Well, well, uh, uh, it's a huge list of things, but it's fortunately fairly common sense. Uh, excessive noise, disrupting other pers, somebody else's peace and enjoyment of their property. Virtually any violation of the entire municipal code is a potential nuisance.
And there's a, there's a pretty, there's a process by which the town, um, it's required by our municipal code that one has to go through in order to actually determine that something is a nu- nuisance. And it's ultimately made by the town council. Um, I will give you the most recent examples of nuisances that have been, uh, determined to be such, uh, by the town council have been the lack of, clearing of vegetation on vacant parcels, uh, of property throughout town. So the fire department actually came and brought forth a nuisance, essentially a recommendation for the town council to make a nuisance, a, a determination of a nuisance there. There's been, um, uh, in addition, properties that have just been not maintained uh, and has collected debris, uh, and material and stuff in their yards, both run inside the houses, um, generally creating potentially unsafe living conditions. And there've also, there is also one for, um, I know the, the failure of a, um, retaining wall on private property that threatened to basically, uh, if not fixed, uh, threatened to block, um, one of the roads in town. So, I mean, those are just three of the most recent, but nuisances that can be disturbances. And I think technically, the code says any violation of the municipal code can be considered nuisance.
Okay. I have some more specific questions on, so when someone converts, um, from a potential monthly rental to, um, a short-term rental and they rent it for seventy-five days, does the house have to stay vacant for the rest of the year? Or does it get converted back into a monthly rental? Because there's a whole process of getting converted into a there's a conversion process in the code.
Um, so, uh, beyond the seventy-five days, the, of course, the owner could live in the house. But yes, the owner could also at that point rent, uh, for, rent the house, you know, for a, a longer term lease. So yes, it's possible.
So it doesn't limit the rental of the house after the seventy-five days?
No, this, it's only the short-term rental. So again, you know, the less than thirty-day rental.
I just wanted to confirm that the house was not completely off the market after seventy-five days.
Does not have to be.
It's, okay. I'm assuming the monies, uh, for the violations will go in the same, in the same general fund? Uh, as, in the same percentages? The violations, will, will they be distributed the same way as the-
T O T?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that goes straight to the, the general fund.
Okay. And the interesting thing that I, I didn't quite understand is we're grouping host owners and hosting platform and all the violations. And now, does that mean if, if someone, if has three violations and they're on one of the hosting platforms, is the hosting platform then shut down? Well, 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 it says right in here, it says the, the, the owner, host, or hosting platform has violated chapter three. Well, if one does, they all do. So how do you determine who's violating the code?
All right, do you mean that the entity that's violating the code by not paying the T O T taxes? Or do you mean a broader situation?
That doesn't specify that. So, you know, like, I, it's, it's unclear that, you know, how a hosting platform besides the T O T would be in violation.
Would you, uh, point me again to the section you're referring to?
Um, on page fourteen, section four. And I think, you know, all, all through, pretty much from page eleven through page fifteen, they're all grouped in the same kind of-
We do list the hosting platform responsibilities. So providing the T O T, verifying that it is a registered short-term rental, um, and having data available. So those, I think, would be the violations that the hosting platform could be responsible for.
Or just that property?
With that property, yes. I mean, but there could be multiple instances where the same hosting platform has failed to verify the, the short-term rental registry, for example.
Okay, and the same thing for the host. So if the host has, could have, uh, three properties, if it's a host or, you know, someone taking care of the property, that's what a host is, right? Somebody taking care of local property?
Is the owner.
Okay, so that's not the person within thirty miles?
Again, the owner can only have one property that's, that has a, a registered, uh, license.
So the host and the owner are one of the same thing. Doesn't say host.
No, but it is, yeah, it is the, uh,
There's a lot of places they have hosts that are kind of local people that take care of V R B Os. And it, it looks like there's, there's gonna be no minimum rental period, so the recommendation is to leave that off completely?
Yes, that's not recommended as part of the changes.
Okay. All I have here.
Okay. Three days or twenty-four hours.
So I have another question.
Go ahead.
Um, i- if somebody's property is damaged by a next-door neighbor hosting situation, who, who's, who pays for that damage?
Well, that would be for, that would be very determinant on the circumstances. Um, if the host was negligent, they could presumably be sued by the injured party, uh, who would also have the opportunity to sue the tenants who caused the damage. Um, that's not a question that's easy to answer independent of specific facts.
So, if I may, you're saying it's a, it's a, it's an action at that point. It's a civil action.
That, that, that's a, that's a tort claim presumably against whoever is responsible for the-
Is someone really going to say someone's rose bushes were all pulled up? It's five hundred dollars and, you know, twenty hours of labor worth of damage. Is someone really going to get any satisfaction or be able to afford to sue even in, uh, small claims court for that kind of damage?
Unfortunately, the law is not terribly effective at protecting us against vandalism and the, and, and I, I, I don't have a good answer for that. I'd- Good.
Yeah. I have seen in Corte Madera homeowners, uh, berating young men who have done vandalism. And that's his remedy. That's that person's remedy.
No, I wouldn't be satisfied.
Right, no.
Um, I'm not touching your rose.
Is there, uh, any, uh, continuing review of the ordinance by the council other than a two-year period?
Well, the, the two-year period is built in the ordinance, but, you know, the, the town council has the prerogative at any time to direct staff to bring something back for reconsideration.
And so that would be the only mechanism, right? Okay. All right, so, um, uh, given that we've had your presentation, um, is there anything else that staff wants to impart to us about this? Uh, there's no entity making a presentation other than you guys. So that's it. Right, okay. Um, at this point then, we will open it up for public comment. Um, it looks like we may have some commenters here in the room. So, um, we will open it up for a three-minute comment. Um, and if you do, please step up to the microphone and you have three minutes to make a comment. Tracy will also tell us if there's anybody online for that purpose. So.
Let me ask the question.
Uh, go ahead and stand up to the microphone, please. Yeah. So that it goes on the record. No, it just asked the question and it'll be part of the record.
You said that it's 30 miles and it's 24/7 for these owners or responsible person to be available. And my question is, what if they're not available? What can you do then? Because in a case like that, when you're calling, you need someone to respond.
Okay. That's a fair question. That is part of a comment.
That would constitute a violation of the ordinance.
Okay. That's a quick answer. Thank you. We normally wait for all of that.
The police department will also have this contact information. So hopefully they'll be able to get through, or again, it would be a violation.
Okay. Normally we will let staff respond to accrued commentary and questions, but you wanted to get that out. So do you have three minutes of valid comment you'd like to make? You're thinking. Okay. We've got some other folks here. Anyone interested in taking a stab at commentary? No. Okay.
I'm Deirdre Owen. I've lived in Corder Madera since 1962. And I am yet set against this. I, I, my brother had, and his wife have been driven out of where they live in the city. And they live on a three-block only. And it's all from this rental to people that come in and go, and they don't care. And even when they do care, they come home, they're noisy, they've been partying, they're having fun. That's why they come here. My question is, when we live in such a beautiful place as Corder Madera, which as I said about the little league and the kids, why do we want to do this? We need places for people to live, whether they rent or buy. It took my husband and me almost 15 years to save enough money to buy it. But we did and we loved it. I, I just don't understand any of this. I, I don't, I don't. I had my house swarmed next door the day after my husband died because some idiot got on their computer and said, oh, we're having a party at this address. And that's scary. I mean, we have little kids. They go down my street to go to Cove School. And these little ones go along and they backpacks that you'd think would just be way too heavy for them. That's what we're about. I'm sorry. That's, that's all I have to say. I don't know if you can get the rest of my.
Thank you.
Corder Madera. I don't want it like that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Deirdre. Tracy, do you have any hands up?
Uh, yes, Carl and Georgian have their hand up. Should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay.
Now available audible? Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, good. First of all, let me apologize for my earlier failure to come online when you called out for Carlos. So my grandson is not here to be my technical director. So we're happy to use ourselves. I, I want to make a couple of brief comments. One is that I am impressed with the work the staff did. This ordinance now looks quite different and much more acceptable than it did in the past. I guess that's what teamwork does. And as, as neighbors and participants in this process, we're happy to be part of that team. I do have one comment that I think is, oh, my second remark about the ordinance is I was happy to see that the neighborhood response groups are included in sort of under the umbrella of this ordinance. Because where I live in the hills, that organization is very important. And I want to, I want to point out why. Maybe this is a bit redundant. I apologize for that. But I would like to see in this ordinance, some, I would like to see the issue of the, of the penetration into a neighborhood addressed. That is the burden of renters that sits on, on the neighborhood when they rent a property for a short-term rental. And the reason is quite simple. We work very hard where I live to maintain a very good and dedicated neighborhood response group. But every time we lose a resident and a renter comes in, and it doesn't matter whether it's a long-term rental or short-term rentals, they do not participate in the safety activities of the neighborhood response groups. So as, as they come in and, and neighbors who, some of whom who may have participated in the past leave, we begin to see the, the, the sort of waning of the support that we need out of people who live in the neighborhood, treasure their homes, their lives and their neighbors. And will participate in the work of an NRG. That can only be done, I think, if there's some limit that's placed on the degree of penetration that's allowed by this ordinance of short-term rentals in any particular neighborhood, especially those neighborhoods which are vulnerable, for instance, to wildfires. I hope you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next would be?
All right. We have Lucinda and then after Lucinda we'll have Karen. Go ahead, Lucinda.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to just clarify what the definition of a licensee is. Is it for the residents? And the owner thereof, but what if there are two residents, two, one residence and two independent owners? Would that require one license or two licenses? And therefore have instead of 75 days, 150 days? That's, that's one question. And the other one, I was just wondering why ADUs are excluded. The theory I would assume is because they're rented for longer periods of time, but one could, in essence, take an ADU and make it a short-term rental opportunity. So I would appreciate some clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucinda.
Okay. Karen, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Hi.
Oops. Sorry about that, Karen.
Now you're hearing me?
Yes.
So my first question has to do, do violations trigger a revocation of the permit? Or do they just start a process under which the permit may be contested? So is it like, is, is there a hard trigger that there are certain things that could occur? That that's it on the permit? Or does it just begin this steps of the, the process? The second question is, is I live in a homeowners association over on the east side. And I've read through chunks of this doc, document, and I can't see anything that clearly speaks to homeowners associations, condos, PUDs, townhouses and what have you. So are we excluded from this? Or are we possibly included? And if our homeowners association has specific regulations that forbid short-term rentals, then I'm guessing that regardless of what the town's regulations are, that the homeowners association regular, regulations would have priority over whatever the town says. Those are my questions.
Okay. Thank you. Um, anyone else, Tracy?
Yes, we have one more. That's Brenda Brown.
Hi, Brenda Brown, and I live on Sausalito Street. And I've been here since, with my husband, since 1966 in the town of Corder Madera. And I attended the meeting on August 8th. And I remember Commissioner Rizzo asking a basic question, and that was, whom does this ordinance benefit the most? And I think that we Corder Madera citizens ought to have the greatest benefit. And in the meantime, I know that the consultant and the commissioners have worked very hard to make this ordinance be excellent and, and not have a negative impact on the town. And I appreciate their work. On the other hand, there are some issues that I think need to be considered. I don't think anyone can predict the financial and social impact of the ordinance. From the prognosis I got from the hearing, the economic gains for the city are negligible. Yet the social deficits can be enormous. I'm hearing tonight of the impact on staff as well as on residents who may face some negative consequences. We are a town, not a city, and historically we tried to preserve that small town identity. Our neighborhood and Sausalito Street, as I understand from Todd Lando a couple of nights ago, is of high, high bio risk, our whole neighborhood. So we, as Carl indicated earlier, we try to work diligently to build our community and ensure our safety. My recommendation, I, I, I know that short-term renters may not have the same level of commitment as those who are here either renting or owning long-term. I'd like to remove this ordinance from consideration if I have my way, which I don't. But I'd like to focus on the supply of affordable housing for long-term residents, including city and school staff, rather than make it easier for non-residents to live here short-term. I'd like to acknowledge, as Carl did, the contribution of the NRGs. And frankly, just having an NRG contact as part of the ordinance is not sufficient to acknowledge all the work that the block captains and the residents who are longer term do through their first aid classes, shepherd days, educational events, like the other night's two-hour meeting with fire marshal, fire chief and police department. So we need to be aware of our neighbors who have mobility issues, for example. So unfortunately, short-term renters can't rise to the level of those who have been through these emergency preparedness and community building experiences. But I thank you very much for hearing me out.
Thank you, Brenda. Um, is there anyone else, Tracy?
No one else, Tracy.
Okay. Revisit the room. No hands up? All right. So we'll then close this public comment section of this hearing. There was a number of questions there for staff. And I know you all take notes. And I don't know if Adam, you want to take a stab, or Bob, you want to take a stab at some of this stuff?
Sure. A good teammate.
Yeah.
Like the question was, what constitutes an owner of a property? And it can be an individual. It can be multiple individuals. It could be a business entity. But the question was also if there's more than one individual, then do they have to get separate licenses? And does that then allow 75 days for each owner? No, no. It's, it's one license per property, no matter the number of owners of that property and one 75-day period per property. Question about do violations automatically trigger revocation? No, there needs to be due process provided and that the ordinance, you know, incorporates all those, those options. But they all provide, you know, due process to the person that's being accused of the violation.
And there was something about three violations and it triggered something in particular?
Yes, and three violations within 24 months does then allow, you know, this to be automatically upgraded in terms of a misdemeanor, whatever the, the staff chooses. And then about homeowner association restrictions, typically the, the town does not enforce HOA restrictions. However, intent is to, as part of the application process to have the owner certify, among other things, that they are not in violation of their HOA provisions. And, and just to add to that, I think most, if not all of our, I should say, there's single, there are some homeowners associations, certainly associated with single-family residential R1 neighborhoods. But a lot of the other, there's also a lot of homeowners associations located in multifamily residential zoning districts like R2 zoning districts where this ordinance would not apply. One of the important things I think that some of the commenters were speaking about, concern about these homes not being occupied by primary homeowners or whatnot. And while that would be true for the days on which renters are actually occupying the home, we have intentionally put in place, and this was the requirement that you cannot rent that home for more than 75 days in any calendar year, which really the intention of that is to make sure that you're actually have a primary homeowner who is, who is home the rest of the time. Or it's being rented, as I think Commissioner Rizzo said, it could be rented for the other remaining days of the year. I'm not going to do the math in my head right now, but although I do think it's unlikely that you would have that cycle repeating every year because finding leases on a six-month basis and then using 75 days for your short-term rental becomes a very big headache for a potential homeowner, but theoretically possible. So I think this is, you know, it, you're still with this ordinance have homeowners. And, and again, we heard at prior public meetings that before this commission and the town council of how this will help existing homeowners, some who stay in their homes by having some additional rental income at times. And also that it does provide value for those wishing who live in Corder Madera, who are residents here, wishing to have, you know, their family members or others come into town and be able to stay in a, in a home in close proximity and visit Corder Madera as well. So but I think I just that point that this is really intended to, and, and the, the regulations are very carefully crafted so that these aren't short-term rentals year-round. This is a primary homeowners, people who likely live here today and own their homes. And they have a limited availability to do this on a 75 days out of the year. And therefore I would say are those homeowners would be familiar with the NRG concept and the safety and of the neighborhoods and whatnot.
Thank you. There was a question about why ADUs are excluded from this.
Well, one is of, I think the most recent state law related to ADUs actually precludes it in the state legislation that says you cannot rent them for 30 days, for less than 30 days, these ADUs. And so I'll start with that, but I think we actually had that in our ordinance long before the state legislation. Because we were certainly streamlining all the permit reviews and all sorts of concessions were being granted in ordinances to allow for the development of ADUs for the purpose of providing additional housing stock for the local, for, for, for the town. And so that was the reason they were excluded. That's another reason why they're excluded. So I think there's also those, especially if you have detached ADUs, they are very, it is a sort of a resource on a lot that makes it very easy otherwise to rent them as a short-term rental or some sort of, yeah, short rental property, if not precluded because the impacts to the immediate homeowner are not readily viable or readily, readily sort of. They're, they're not obvious. And so I think several, those are several reasons, but I think going back, they're just also just not allowed in state law.
Okay. There was also a question about condos. And I believe that you mentioned that they're not included as acceptable residences for.
Correct. The zoning district in which our condominiums, attached condominiums are located in Corder Madera, I believe are all in R2 zoning districts, Martha. Yeah. And, and one other thing I would just say, I, one of the commenters noted that, you know, referred to who was involved in crafting this ordinance. And while Bob has been, and I'm grateful, really grateful for Bob's work and sort of leading the charge here and, and helping us stay organized and focused and on the task at hand. This has really been a team effort by multiple staff members, Martha, myself and Amy, you know, so it goes on and on in terms of a collective effort here. So I don't want anyone to get the wrong impression that this was sort of an ordinance drafted by Bob. Bob's been great about sort of just helping lead the conversation out in the community. Bob's been great about sort of just helping lead the conversation out in the community, surveys, and drafting a lot of this for our, you know, all of us to review and collectively become comfortable with.
Great. I appreciate that, and I think it's apparent to the commission here how much this has been a group effort. There seems to be a sort of larger question, and Brenda asked, where does the ordinance benefit the most? And I would ask you to couch it sort of one final time for this presentation. You know, why, from the number of STRs in town, and why you're here? And it's not, is it or is it not intended to benefit anybody in particular, other than to do what? Just create regulation, or just, if you would mind, restating?
Well, I mentioned a couple of them before. I mean, we do recognize that that short-term rentals are basically a use of property by homeowners, typically homeowners, at least in Cordermadera, that's what we've seen. We've had short-term rentals operating in Cordermadera for several years, we know that. But they are an opportunity to make use of that property for some, and I mentioned this earlier, potentially some additional revenue and income that can offset the high costs of living. We've had some of those commenters and people come to our meetings in the past. And I think that's really a primary one. We've also, as I mentioned, they are a resource for bringing visitors into town in a way that essentially people who travel may want to visit a place like Cordermadera, whether there are families here, whether there's an event. And if that's desired, and that's a way that people can come into town, and obviously also brings in revenue through to the town through TOT tax, which can then be reinvested into the community through other services. And also, I guess, you know, brings that resource as an option to, again, neighbors and residents who live here who may have other family members or visitors to be able to be in close proximity, whether that's extended family members, parents, oftentimes we've heard use that as well, so. I think that those are the main reasons why this ordinance is being developed. And I don't know if anybody has any other, others that they want to add at this point in time? Thanks, Amy.
Yeah, I will say, I've worked on short-term rental ordinances for about 10 years now, written multiple ordinances. And I was also really complimentary of this ordinance particularly because it does provide a nice balance. Short-term rentals are in the community regardless if you have an ordinance or not. So even if we had a prohibition, we would still have to enforce against those that were doing it illegally. But this opens the door a little bit. And instead of a land use permit, like some jurisdictions require, it's a license. So that gives us more tools at the town to change regulations. And that means after a year, that they have to comply with the new regulations. So we have an opportunity every year to revise and rethink. And people will not have something that runs with the land that will be in perpetuity, like a use permit, that we wouldn't be able to change. So, but I think there's multiple benefits to being able to have them. It can provide additional economic opportunity for those, especially in areas where you have high property values, high property costs. It may allow someone to be able to stay in the home longer. And it obviously provides revenue to the town. So it's a little bit of a balancing act, but I think this provides a good base. So if we get something wrong this round, or if we need to go back and change it, we can. And then all of those annual permits will come along with the ordinance too. So I think it's well-written, but I'm interested to hear what you all think as well.
Thank you, Amy. I'm just going to ask the unspoken question that everybody has a fear of, and that is this somehow opens the floodgates to people saying, ah, they've got an ordinance, therefore we shall have STR. But it's my impression here that the STR is, ordinance is really here to regulate, control, license, and then get a handle on it versus not having a handle on it. How would you guys respond to that?
I think that's very true. And again, I think when you look at the data, even without an ordinance, how many have been here, operated in Cordermadera without any sort of regulatory scheme? You have to look at what is the demand and the draw in a town like Cordermadera? You're not on the ocean. You know, this is not necessarily a super tourist destination. So I think that even with an ordinance and an allowance to do this, I don't think you're going to have a groundswell of, you know, hundreds of proposals coming in. I think you'll probably, right now, that it's sort of hubbers around 30, and it wouldn't surprise me if it stayed at that level, or maybe, you know, going up to 45, 50 at the very most, but I'd be very surprised if you saw, you know, hundreds and hundreds coming in. Because again, it's just not that much of a tourist draw here.
Thank you, Bob. I think a couple of commenters were quite clear that they wish somehow they could get more neighborhood involvement in the NRG, somehow that there would be more attachment to that. And I don't know that there's a way to do that in any administrative way. It's the choice of the resident to do that. I don't see that. Before I ask the other commissioners for questions, I did have one final one that I forgot about. Somewhere in municipal code, years ago, I read that residents are supposed to drag their garbage cans in after trash pickup. And nobody's ever known where the heck that resides in the municipal code, but I read it. You know.
The one that comes up with, garbage service comes up, are you required to have garbage service? Or have you been dealing with that one? And yes, the answer is the municipal code does say yes. Every address, every residence has to have garbage service. I haven't seen that particular requirement to pull them in somewhere yet, but it may be in there.
It was in a mimeograph page years ago, but I did read it. So, you know, that's one of the more annoying things about people not around is that their garbage cans are left on the street, you know, after trash pickup, and nobody's around to get them in, so. I don't know how to regulate that, but residents do make sure that happens. I don't know what to do about that, if there's any caveat. And if you knew where that exists, then.
I found it.
Oh.
Six four, six, six oh four oh four oh subsection D. I believe that's it.
And Printhe, what did it say?
Well, they talk about you can't have solid waste containers in any public street, et cetera, et cetera. Notwithstanding the foregoing, solid waste collection containers may be placed on the days in the designation collection locations for removal and emptying of said collection containers, but shall be removed within 24 hours of the day of collection.
There it is. The municipal code speaks.
And how is that being enforced?
They have a code enforcement.
Yeah.
Complaint-based. No, I mean, but you know, the difference, I think this is a good point. I mean, if somebody goes on vacation, probably more likely to, and I know when I've stated one of these short-term rentals, I've seen that actually this is required to be put back after you basically put, here's the trash day. They must be returned to their place after, you know, the day of the trash or whatnot. And so that's an instruction that certainly could go out and be required. But if somebody's on vacation, they leave their house empty, it's, how do you deal with the trash then? You know. You ask, well, you ask your neighbor, right? Exactly.
Thank you.
Your neighbor. Right. And thank you for digging that up. That's great. Okay. I can quote that now to my name, sorry, that's fabulous. Really good. Okay, commissioners.
Something I forgot to ask is, some of the, some of the, some of the cities that have had programs and have now taken them back, such as large cities like Manhattan. What were the reasons for them to stop allowing short-term rentals? Now it's only 30 days. Minimum.
Well, I don't know. I think there's a variety of reasons elsewhere, but I know primarily one of the reasons in New York City was for housing stock and wanting to maintain their their housing stock as housing on a permanent basis, you know, so.
As we've said in earlier meetings, that's the primary reason that Marin County has put a moratorium on their issuance of licenses is because in some of the coastal communities, as many as a third of the units have become short-term rentals. And again, it's because of the tourist demand is so high in those areas.
Thanks.
Margaret, you have any more questions?
I have only comments.
Okay. Valerie, any more questions?
Only comments.
Okay, and Dan? We're ahead of schedule. All right, that's great. So I think we will then roll into comments and your thoughts on the ordinance. And so there's ideas, if any modifications to the ordinance, let's be as explicit as we can in recommending that, if you have such. Because it's a very fine document. So I'll start with you, Daniel.
Thank you. Well, as I had stated in previous meetings, I'm not in favor of the short-term rental ordinance. And the reasons are, I think it can weaken neighborhood and sense of community. I think it will take some housing units off the market for people who have zero basis or very low, or no, you know, basis in their house and have taxes that have stayed the same for 30 years. 75-day rental could definitely generate enough money to be worth keeping that house on a short-term rental basis, rather than putting it back on the housing market. And we've worked very, very hard trying to create a housing master plan to create more affordable housing and housing in the community. And I do worry that this will take units off the market. Third is security. Short-term renter is not going to be coming from other parts of California, other parts of the United States, other parts of the world, is not going to be aware of our earthquake danger, our flooding danger, our fire danger, how to be prepared themselves for their safety, or maybe even impact their neighbor's safety. And I have to say, if we're going to benefit 45 or 50 residents of a community with thousands of people who may be impacted by this, are we really want to impact them? However, all of that said, I do think we should move forward with this ordinance. The town council made it very clear that they intend to adopt an ordinance. And I think the staff has done a very good job of responding to our comments. And I think it's much better than it was. And so I would not vote against it.
All right, there's brevity there, Dan, thank you.
Brevity?
And Valerie?
All right, thank you. All right, I I understand also that town has put a lot of resources into making this ordinance. And I think our job here is obviously not to vote against. I don't think that's why we're here today, is to make sure that we are determining the balance and making sure that all of the voices heard from the ones who are for and for the ones who are against it, and that we are providing the comments to the ordinance that can complement both opinions into this. So with that said, I am still concerned about not seeing the list of nuisances, and I understand it's extremely large. I think the severity of punishment is different for each violation. When someone is damaging the property, that's a serious violation versus someone, someone's driveway smells like trash because they didn't take it out, right? Maybe it's not so serious. So I feel like it would be great to see the organization of kind of the nuances that would be listed in a way with a language that would say include, but not limited to, and have the severity of punishment in the table listed to it. I'm a very visual person, again, I like tables and charts. So I feel like there should be some sort of, you know, kind of a three-step organization to that, so that community can understand where they can go, under which violation, what they will receive in return when they do make a complaint to the town about it, and what the expectations are. And another thing that I'm in agreement with Dan here completely is that 135 days, it is a long period, whereas I do understand it's due to the scheduling, due to the hearings, due to the filing. But it would be great to see again, in the severity of the violation. If the violation is pretty high, then would it make sense to temporarily suspend the license while the hearing is being cleared? So I feel like that, for me, would be a trigger to vote one way or another, because I would love to see that change or clarification made in that particular note. And for me, I think just to say again, like for me, personal opinion, as a mother of two kids who live in here, I love the town the way it is. I'm not necessarily a supporting voice for this ordinance, but I do agree with Dan that we, again, here to vote on it today, to say yes, with the, all of the quotes and balances, to make sure that everything is maintained in a proper order with the regulations.
Thank you. All right. I think we might revisit that comment a little bit after we go through the other commissioners here. So Margaret, your thoughts about this?
I agree with the idea that if it's only 30 people right now that are benefiting, there are 30 illegal units, short-term rental units on the market. If only 30 people are benefiting from the short-term rental, and maybe 20 people more decide to do it, how does that compare to the rest of the town? And people like this woman and others that we've heard from, who say they don't want the character of the town to change, and this is a changer. This changes the character of a town little by little. And as far as the comment that Mr. Brown made about no groundswell, probably not, I don't really know, but if you're the person living next door to the one groundswell that's happened, it's not going to be very pleasant. Right now, there are 30 illegal short-term rentals in Cordermadera, and I don't have much confidence in the fact that if we can't enforce across the line, there shouldn't be anything going on. If we can't enforce that, I don't know how we could possibly enforce all of this. It's it's going to be beyond challenging, and I don't think we can, if we can't do it, you know, on a red-line enforcement, there shouldn't be any, then I don't see how we can enforce any of this. I don't think there, I don't think it's possible. I would encourage, I don't believe that Cordermadera should have short-term rentals. And I think that if my fellow commissioners don't believe that there shouldn't be short-term rentals, we ought to send a message to the town council, and a strong one, saying we don't believe there should be short-term rentals in Cordermadera. And we've sat here and listened to everybody's comments. And so I'm going to vote against this, and I would encourage everybody else, fellow commissioners, to do the same. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. The result?
First of all, I'm glad to hear from our August 8th meeting that probably 80% of our comments were adopted and
probably eighty percent of our our comments were adopted into some of the new restrictions. Some of the more important ones like parking requirements. One, one owner, one unit, really like that. Still love to see some sort of minimum minimum rental period and somehow trying to figure out how we minimize the number of clusters in in one neighborhood, because I think that could be a definite balance changer. Want to acknowledge how much work went into this new ordinance, and I appreciate Bob Brown and and staff's preparation for these hearings and addressing all of our concerns. But I'm still worried about property turnover. I feel like we're opening up the door for some, for some some trust funders who want to keep that low tax base, giving them even more renters, even more of an opportunity to make more money, not turn over the properties. I see a lot of that in town where houses, they don't get maintained, or they keep them at a certain level, and they don't really, you know, nobody's investing in our, in our community like that as as we want in our, in our in our general plan. I'm still having a very hard time aligning with the the purpose and intent of the ordinance, which is on the first page. And how this will work in conjunction with the housing element and some of the other general plan goals seems like there's sort of a some tension between what we're trying to do with bringing more housing in and and kind of letting a few pieces of the housing, you know, fade away. We do not have a ten of housing inventory. Every unit off the market for sale or rental is is some sort of impact to the people looking for permanent housing solutions for families to join our community. There's thirty to maybe sixty houses now that those are people that aren't, those are not just one, thirty, sixty people. There could be families of four. We're talking about two hundred and forty people in some cases. So it could be quite, quite a number of people. And I think most people in this room, I can't speak for everybody, would like to see a neighbor for more than a few days. Definitely, I've, I lived next to rentals in the past, and they were definitely least maintained on the, on the on the block. I think it's a problem. I definitely think I will still maintain my position that the housing, that housing hoteling is not in Corder Madera's general DNA. And I said that in our last meeting. We really need to figure out what our identity is as a town. Are we, are we going to be vacation village? Or are we going to be a community of families? In our small village, which is what we are. So that's how I feel about it. I'm having a harder time making that connection, and what we really want to do is.
I understand. Thank you, Jim. I think that I've heard staff talk about the fact that if we don't do something, we have nothing. And is that a fair? We have nothing to regulate these things at all. There's no teeth at all.
You currently deal with prohibition. And again, if 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 the council indicated a desire to have staff really go at enforcement of those, I think, you know, you could. And part of it would be getting, you know, this third party vendor who then can identify these as they occur and the exact address, which really helps with enforcement. So I think that's certainly possible. I think the the council in directing staff basically said, let's figure this out once and for all. And and I I think that the town manager said that if the intent is, you know, to ban STRs, then there probably should be some ordinance changes that specifically address that even greater than than what exists today. So I think it's kind of an either or, you know, create an ordinance allowing them or create additional regulations prohibiting them and and be much more active in terms of enforcement.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, I I don't see the rapid turnover personally to STRs. I have seen homes on my street change hands frequently in the last couple of years. There's been a lot of sales and it's unsettling. But they become neighbors and they become friends. It's part of change. It occurs. We see new people. They come in, they have a different tact. It's not the same group that was there. I'm aware of that. There are there's a change in people's mentality, their whole approach to community, who they want to connect with, how they connect. It's not like it was fifteen years ago. That's true. So it is changing. And I don't think this ordinance is going to encourage a significant change. I think it's going to give the town some tools to actually impact the process that occurs. If we, I personally think that if we don't, if we created, if if the council created a ban on short term rentals, it's going to be problematic for the town to have those occurring, because they will, and we're not going to stop them. People are going to do it under the books as they are now, but there's no enforcement. So it's one or the other. I think that the council wants to create something that is a viable tool. I think this is about as good as it gets with this kind of ordinance. You guys have talked to other communities in many aspects of this. You've compared to other communities. I think it's I think it's important to Margaret's comment, if we can't enforce what we have now, there's been nothing to enforce what they have now. But they can't do anything about it other than nuisance or complaints. So this would give the town some tools to do some enforcement. And so, with that said, you know, I would support the ordinance at this point. And I don't know where Mr. Rizzo would stand. I hear that Margaret would vote against it, I think, at this point. But there are the ideas of a couple of amendments to this between us and between the comments here. I think Dan brought up the fact that he thought seventy-five days was too much. That has to be supported by other commissioners if that is a recommendation we want to make to the council. Valerie commented on the hundred and thirty-five days is a procedural process that she'd like to see reduced, as did Dan. I think that staff felt that that was sort of a a alternate process to normal complaints and normal. So that's a pathway separate from other penalties. One of the points that Valerie brought up is about the nuisance list. So that's embedded in the town code that is there, but a licensee is not going to read the code. So to her point is how do we enumerate those possible infractions that would apply? That's a big list to create. I don't know. So many parts of the code I think you could bring into that. Adam, you look like you want to say.
If I may, I mean, I think one of the things, and you touched on this, Chair Chair Chase, just that both, there are some comments, both by Commissioner Kenny and Rizzo about still the concern that this isn't, this is going to affect the housing stock and and that squaring that with the real, all the other work we're doing on a policy level. So is there some amount of days that you feel would be, you know, would would lessen that sort of effect, or it actually make, ensure that those units or those housing units are occupied by families the rest of the year, or what have you, whatever they may be by residential, you know, homeowners. Obviously, they could be renters, or they could be homeowners themselves. But is that something that perhaps you want to pass along in terms of a different standard there that gets at that point, which seems to be a bit significant concern? A couple of commissions. I would just offer that, that one, because you're right, there's a lot of other stuff here, but I think there were several comments about mostly, we've responded to a lot of those other concerns and comments, but that's a primary, I think, overarching concern that I think that number was intended to get at. And so if we, you know, I think that would be useful for the mission to potentially comment on.
Jim, is there a number that comes to mind?
I don't think it's my place to put a number on anything. I I just, you know, we're putting policies in place, and you guys have a vision. You got your tenure vision probably. I mean, I'm not going to be on this commission forever, and I know that you guys are developing plans for the long term. And and so I I just, you know, what's the, it seems like a mixed message to me. So if if we are, if we're okay with these short term rentals, are they sprinkled around? You know, are we going to allow them all to be in one place? And and it's hard to tell. I just, I could just see that it could be a problem if there is two hundred of them out there, three hundred of them, but without having a a ceiling or a town goal, let's say. Like if town council said, yeah, town goal, we'd like to have fifty of these or a hundred of these on the market, and you you know, you can't apply for more than one year in a row. I don't know. I don't know how to make it fair, but it would seem to me that to cap, to cap it somewhere would make a little bit of sense. I mean, because what we're kind of saying, like, I I'm in the construction industry, and I could see doing short term rentals to a lot of consultant, to a lot of construction people. So this could take off to be kind of a bigger thing. Because people need a house for seventy-five days and are willing to spend a premium on it. So there, you know, it's not just people coming into town. You know, there there are people that need, need houses for, that are, that are locals for fifteen days. So I think that there could be it could escalate to be more than just thirty if it was illegal. There's, there are still a lot of our community members that are not willing to do stuff illegal. So these people that are doing this illegal, we probably, we could have ninety, a hundred people in the hopper waiting for this thing to get, we don't know how many people are out there. But I don't know what my number is, because I think that's more of a policy that the town in looking at their other housing policy, how many, how many do you guys want?
Sorry, I meant the number being number of days per year that it's allowed.
Number of housing.
Number of days per year, because that, that would, I think that's trying to get at that central policy of.
As long as you're not isolating that property for for seventy-five days only, and it can be opened up for a monthly rental, that, that to me relaxed my tension a little bit about it, because I don't want to see anything sitting there for set for two hundred and ninety days, because people aren't going to maintain it, it's going to sit empty. So I feel more comfortable with with how many days that that wasn't my, it's, it's more of the number that could be escalated and the the amount of, I mean, we already have a queue of people. We have great schools. Great, I mean, we've got great everything, and and there are just a number of families that want to be in here. And then we're already talking about thirty that aren't going to be in here. So there could be sixty, seventy, eighty families not not being able to enjoy our community.
But if they're limited, those thirty are limited to seventy-five days a year, there's still going to be families, the the residents. So I'm trying to understand.
Families only move in the summer for the schools, right? Most families, they're not going to move from one place to another if they're, if they've got three kids in a, in a high school or something like that, or so I think that, you know, yearly rentals are more kind of geared towards families that aren't moving into the area or maybe another state. I've just noticed a lot of families do move in August because they went to the school district, but that's just my opinion. You know, going back to the days, I think that's definitely something I don't have an opinion about the days, as long as the property is available for the other two ninety in some sort of monthly capacity. That's me. I don't know what Daniel has to say about it.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Daniel, what are your thoughts about that time limit?
Well, I don't, I I also don't feel like I have the knowledge to kind of pick a date. I mean, I think the question I'd have is is how many days would generate enough revenue that somebody with no, with their mortgage paid, and they've had their house thirty years, so their tax basis is extremely low? You know, how much revenue would make it worthwhile doing this? And seventy-five days is you know, again, I don't know the economics. If you have a four bedroom house, are you renting it out for fifteen hundred dollars a day? You know, and so what, you know, how much revenue seventy-five days is that generating?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I think limiting people's potential income is a tough road to go down. I would think that seventy-five days might represent a summer away for a family, right? Two and a half months, they could take the family on a summer vacation and rent the house out for the summer and come back. That seems like a good amount of time to say the house, we want to leave the house for two and a half, three months.
But then it's not a short term rent. You don't need this.
Well, you're right about that. But they could do it through a group, Expedia, Groupers, whomever, and do it in thirty days, but they're gone for seventy-five days. Right? So I do know people in other communities that do that serially. They go away for two months, and they have several renters during that time, and they come back and they paid for their vacation. And that's, it's a great benefit to those families to be able to do that. They are doing it regularly so they can afford to take trips. That's the way it works in other places in my experience with some families. So seventy-five days is that you were saying that you thought that was too much? And somehow that might be reduced to be what number? Is that sixty days? We had bandied that about at the last hearing. Do you want to propose a number of days?
Well, maybe I'd like to hear from Bob in terms of what what economics we've looked at and also what other communities are doing.
There are not a lot of ordinance that that have the number of days that are are this restricted. But our calculations, we're really trying to get at, is there a financial incentive for doing a short term rental versus renting the property permanently for an entire year? So for example, at seventy-five days, what we've seen was generally an average of about three hundred dollars a night, but let's just say maybe five hundred dollars a night for, you know, a normal house.
I don't buy that.
Okay. But again, short term rentals, you know, you're comparing that maybe to a hotel room or something like that. But let's just run the numbers with five hundred. So times seventy-five, that equals thirty-seven thousand five hundred. And so if you then compared that to a rental rate, that'd be rental rate of about three thousand one hundred and twenty-five a month. So that's quite low for a home in Corder Madera. We'd probably rent more like five thousand at least, five, six thousand. So that's the kind of comparison we were trying to do. For example, if you did sixty days, times, again, let's just say five hundred, that comes out to thirty thousand dollars. So again, that's twenty-five hundred dollars a month comparison as to what rent would be per month. So that's quite low. So again, our calculation was trying to get at, have we eliminated a great incentive for somebody to rent the house just for, say, seventy-five days versus the entire year? But you are right. I mean, certainly, large luxurious homes can rent for more than five hundred dollars a night, but also they're not going to rent per month for five thousand dollars. Yeah, they're going to probably be in the more like, you know, eight thousand, nine thousand dollar per month range too. So again, it depends upon the 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 character of of the rental.
Did that help or confuse things, Daniel? Neither? Okay. All right, well, we've sort of aired what commissioners might want to say or hear. Is there anything else that you guys would propose as an amendment to this or a motion?
I guess I have a question, since I think some of the commissioners are not in favor of short term rentals. On the other hand, I think town council is committed to adopting a short term rental ordinance. So is there a way of moving the ordinance we have in front of us as a recommendation to council, but to be able to acknowledge that the majority, if it's true, of the commission doesn't support short term rentals?
Absolutely, I would think, yeah.
The government code provides that the planning commission shall render its decision in the form of a written recommendation addressing the relationship of the proposed ordinance or amendment to the applicable general plan and transmit it. That that is what is required of you. On top of that, of course, you know that that the council wants to consider this. You have a couple of choices, as I see it. One is to forward your recommendation, explain. You have a couple of choices, as I see it. One is to forward your recommendation, explaining why you don't think that the ordinance should be adopted at all. Um. The other, however, is to say that you believe that it would uh that you don't. Favor the ordinance, but you believe nevertheless that it would be consistent with the general plan and could be adopted. With the following changes and then provide us with a list of changes to include in the resolution.
Thank you.
There's some clarity there. Um. Um. That Valerie.
Yes, and I. Would like to see an amendment um to have the license temporarily suspended if there is a major violation. Occurred and it's under the hearing and procedure of these hundred thirty five days.
Well, okay, you want to have a license suspension. Um. Immediately or uh uh. Um, based on in uh something would constitute a major uh infraction.
Correct.
Yeah.
And. And I believe, and um, you mentioned that it has to be, they have to have an opportunity for the hearing, and I believe those are sixty days, right? So the hearing would be determined under those sixty days and then hundred thirty five days would follow, or is it all in composition?
Thirty five days runs from the moment they file the complaint.
Okay.
Uh, and then if the uh uh director of community development decides not to pursue, it finds that there isn't a violation. They're supposed to tell the complainant within sixty days.
I see. And what if there is a police report for the major violation?
Well. I would hesitate to suspend a license unless it's a matter of public health and safety. If the police report documents that situation. I believe that you could suspend the license for a limited period of time pending due process procedures.
Yeah, so I think I would like to see that because again, uh, the severity of punishment is different for different violations. So if there was a conflict on the street because of. Damaged property or a fight or, you know, something very major escalating and serious because of. The um. The renters who are there temporarily. I feel like that's the owner's responsibility because they did not that the renter. Previously did not see reviews, did not see recommendations, right? So that's. Um, on to them and they should be liable for that. Renter.
I I got the gist of that. I don't know quite how we would state that in ten words or less, but um.
Um, we could state that in cases of violations threatening public health and safety. Uh, the planning, the community development director may elect to um. Issue immediate citation. And uh suspend the license during dependency of any enforcement procedures.
That sounds effective. Uh, does that satisfy your uh intent there?
It is. I'm concerned about the word may, but um, in that sentence, but. But, yes, but I.
Shall, change it to shall.
Change to shall, yes.
Right, well, that that would place a heavy burden on the. Community Development Director. Um, Dan, you looked like you wanted to say something in response to that.
No.
Oh, okay.
I kind of do.
Good.
You just said it places a heavy burden on enforcement. That's the whole issue that we're talking about. That's what we're all feeling. As I can say, see very strongly about the idea of enforcement. People, uh, private citizens who are part of a community being damaged and not having any recourse. Um. Uh, previously, I had brought up the idea of a victims compensation fund. It's going to go into the general fund. I just had all my roses ruined and some Range Rover, you know, run over my lawn. And I have to privately sue. And beside that, it's my obligation as a private citizen. To collect the evidence and help the police. And it's just like, why should a private citizen living their life in our town? Following the rules. Have this obligation to now protect themselves. Against something that 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 we've all. Come here to live with, the peace and quiet and neighborly concerns of a community. I don't, I don't think it's a a fair obligation to put on people. I think it's a financial burden to put on a private citizen. And I think the strongest me- message we can send to the town council is to. Again, reject it.
Okay, then. Completely create a a ordinance um. Uh. Outline. For terminal.
No, that ordinance we already have. I'm saying, let's find a way to enforce it.
We, yeah, we don't have the teeth to.
And let's provide some teeth. Let's provide a way for people to um get an answer when they call up the police. And I'm not so sure the police are going to come out on July fourth when everybody is, you know. Concerned with other, other things. I've I've had people, I've called up for enforcement on a different issue. On federal holidays and I get a voicemail.
Right, we all have different experiences. I will attest to your expertise. Um, Jim, I'm curious what you're thinking as all of this transpires.
Again, I I'm still having a hard time with it. So, I mean, and.
All right, so you're saying that you would not support uh passing it on with a recommendation. But uh with uh reservations or not passing it on at all.
Well, passing out reservations or not passing it on at all to me is one of the same. But. I think they did a great job. If town council wants to adopt this, they've got all the, they've got a lot of tools in front of them. But I don't agree with it. The ordinance itself is happening. That's me.
Through the chair, could I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm just curious, um, commissioners, if there's. An additional standard or anything that may um need to be added, if there's a specific issue. Or if it's just the number of short term rentals.
For for me, Amy, it's all about. The year and a half we just spent with trying to figure out how we're going to get more housing. And I don't know if you can solve that problem. It it the number could be zero or could be one, you know, it's it's like you're taking. Sixty. Thirty to sixty off the market, that's thirty to sixty off the market and. We're only required to have seven, ten in our housing element, so it's sort of a percentage.
I absolutely hear you. I think it's a very divisive issue and I think it's um. Can be very controversial and on the housing stock. Piece. Um, I will say the housing element really has reliance on uh primarily multifamily. And uh accessory dwelling units. And so those things are obviously not um. Within this ordinance won't permit any short term rentals. So this is really isolated to the single family homes. Um, if that gives you any um.
But doesn't the single family homes count against the, I mean, they're counted as.
If I may, I I'm just Commissioner Brizo, I'm just trying to. This isn't either or, like, if. They are used for short term rentals, why are they taken out of the housing stock? And if they're limited to seventy five days? Or if they're limited to sixty days?
Okay, well.
Why are they actually removed?
Why does the state want us to have more housing stock? Is it for short term rentals or is it for families to live in?
But it's still, it's still the fam- I've just questioned it. It it seems to me like. A family could still live in that for the great majority of the year. But on vacations or other times of the year, they actually rent it out when they're when they're leaving. So it's still a housing.
And I specify that only seventy five days only happens during the summer? Because then we can make sure that.
Or it could be, that's why I was, I was trying to get at the point of how many days, if you don't get enough. I mean, you're you're basically. It's still, the question is, how do you maintain that as being a housing unit? And so that could be a reduction in the number of days you're allowed to rent it as a short term.
So. What's the definition of workforce housing? Someone that's there most of the, most of the year or the full year? I I.
There's no, it's not related to that, to to how long a person is. Or a household is in a unit.
I I have a clarifying question because I can see the point that those two are separate. And I understand that of, you know, the housing element. Is for a longer term of rental. So if our, if the ordinance for short term listings. Is targeted towards people who are going on a vacation and eighty percent of the staff. It shouldn't even relate to the housing element at all. In what instances? Your concern would be in regards to someone taking away the potential of housing. From the market.
Well, there's other things in our general code that that have to do with uh upkeep on the property and all sorts of things that rentals uh don't, don't really procure. You know, um, investing in our housing stock. Nobody's, nobody's putting rental additions for families on on a rental that they're going to keep forever. I mean, I think that there's other parts of the general code that I'm I'm being very, very generalized. Like, if you want me to go look at the general code, start picking at it. I'm sure I could find five or six things that. Don't align with our general policy and that's.
And so, no, you're saying that um. The code has things that don't align with policy, never mind this ordinance. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying like um. There's unforeseen things that happen during rentals and short term rentals that don't align with the policies that we have. In the general, in the general uh plan. When you start looking at community, community per, like, all the, if you look up the the subsection of community, if you want to bring that up, we could probably read a few things on there and let's see how that aligns with the short term rentals.
Um, may I offer a a thought here? I believe that the main interest in allowing a limited number of these is to actually make housing more affordable for people. Um, and I think that's the the council's primary objective and I do think that would line up nicely with the push for more affordable housing. In the general plan.
It's an argument to be made. I get it. Yeah.
Uh, I guess you're also bringing units off the market, which is rising the cost of purchasing a house because there's not enough. There's not enough.
Okay.
There's not enough volume on the market right now. So, I mean, I mean, there's two edges of that sword.
Yeah, that I agree with because typically people will not be incentivized to sell. They will be renting.
That that is my main concern is that nobody's going to be incentivized as to sell. They're going to be incentivized to do a short term rental. And rent the property out and it's going to stay off the market. For families to come in and be integrated in our community.
Off, okay, all right. I appreciate that. Is there a number where that of of days? Per year, if you limited that.
The days have nothing to do with it. It's the amount of units.
But I I I, okay, I'm I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm trying, I'm trying to just understand why that unit comes off the market. Uh, not understanding. It's still there, a resident, a a homeowner is using the house.
But that homeowner only applies to people that don't have children and don't, like, that have to be up for work. Like, it's it's for like an empty nester that can do anything they want with their home. It it doesn't apply to young families that have to be here. For work. Right?
So, no, I, that may be predominant, but I don't think.
I think I understand. I I get it. It's the turnover of the home from a empty nester to a family is what the concern is.
Empty nester, but also the person who inherits, that's that's inheriting a low property tax and they don't want to sell it.
Sorry, I'm off on a.
See, what I'm saying, there's a few things that we went over that I'm I'm just concerned that there's not going to be a lot of turnover and people are going to wind up just. Renting their properties out because they can make more money renting it. And they, then they will by selling it and getting a capital gains tax.
But you already have an issue.
So. But Adam's question is, so if you limit that potential income. So that they don't. See the benefit of holding on to it before selling it, right? So if there is a reduction in that number of income days. You know, what is that number to you that seems to reduce that?
Well, I mean, I think it's seventy five days. It's fine if it was over the summer because it it aligns with what you're you're, you said earlier with people that want to travel. I understand that a hundred percent. I do. Um. And I'm not arguing that at all. I did, my argument is just about. You know, just turnover on properties, really.
Correct.
That's, that's my main sticking point. Um.
All right, um, Ian, so um. Your comment earlier about what we could do with this uh to uh. Send it on or not, um, we can take a vote to uh recommend against this ordinance at all. Period. There could be a motion for that.
You could do that. It would be, you um, you would need to state your reasons. And the relationship with the general plan. Um, it doesn't have to be a complicated. Um, essay, but I think having a few reasons in the. Uh, result, uh, we would have to prepare a new resolution. Would we bring it back, Adam, or would we? Come up to something tonight?
So, well, that was part one of my question. The other part was simply. Then if we were to vote to pass it on with some attachments or amendments. But with reservations. So how, I don't know how to construct that language to uh.
Let me pull up the draft resolution that is currently before you. Page of the packet, is it on? It's in here because I read it. Exhibit one, so is that, is that before or after the actual? There it is. Um, so. The resol- the resolution would stand. Up until, as is, up until the currently final uh recital. Relating to the fact that it's um. Relating to this hearing. You would add a another whereas, listing your reservations. About the ordinance, the the combined reservations, obviously, of the board. Um. And. Then the trick would be how to phrase section three, really. Uh, which deals with general plan consistency. If it's a general plan consistency issue you're worried about, this would need to be rewarded. Um. You know, in the alternative, we could add another section. This might be simpler, simply saying that. The planning commission believes that this, as currently drafted, this ordinance has too much potential to remove housing stock. Uh, off the market and to change the residential character. Of the town of Corte Madera and therefore the planning commission cannot recommend. Uh, approving this or this this ordinance.
Right, and I would say the same thing. You could recommend. Passing this. Adoption of the ordinance on to the council with the reservations to what. Anne just mentioned about. Concerns about. Uh, the removal of housing stock, potential conflicts with um the housing element uh that was just adopted potentially.
Mm-hmm.
And um, the change and effects on neighborhoods in the town.
Right, those three reasons would be a reason for you to um.
Yeah.
Express your reservations without making a recommendation.
Without, no, without making a recommendation to deny.
Right, right, without making a recommendation to deny.
Yeah.
Well, how about this, the.
It sort of sounds good to me, but. The actual language, uh. If the commission was in favor of that, you know, how do we get to the actual?
Well, um. Should we come back or should we?
No, I know, I wanted to.
Okay. All right, then. Okay, how about section three? Of a, of the ordinance.
It's under now therefore be resolved, right?
Um. Well.
Let's not do the general plan.
Okay, all right, let's skip that part then. Um. After now therefore be further resolved. The planning, the town of Corte Madera Planning Commission has the following recommendation. To the town council regarding the ordinance amendments attached in exhibit A. Uh. Period. The planning commission is concerned. Uh, the planning commission does not recommend. Approval of.
No, does recommend.
Does recommend.
So I think you leave the first now therefore be resolved that the town of Corte Madera Planning Commission forwards its recommendations to the town council to adopt the ordinance. Amendments attached in exhibit A. With the following. Whatever, however you want to say, concerns, reservations about.
Following reservations. Okay, that's good.
Yeah. And then list the one, two and three.
One, two and three.
One would be. Um. Potential for this ordinance to remove housing from. The town's housing stock. the town's housing stock, potential conflicts with the housing element that was recently adopted.
And adverse impacts on.
And for adverse impacts to the town's uh, single-family neighborhood character. And that, that, I'm just offering that up for the chair and the commission to consider.
But that been included?
Oh, that's a separate um issue. So, um. First off, let's just repeat that so I, I get it here. The planning commission would uh forward this with the following reservations. Removal of the town. This uh ordinance would uh impact the town with removal of housing stock in the town or town potential, a potential, right? Um, the uh adverse effects to the neighborhoods.
Significantly changed.
Potential.
Potentially.
Potential, yeah.
Um, so, and then there was the, the potential conflicts with the housing element.
Um, concerns about enforcement.
That's fine.
And the burden on the town to enforce. A growing number.
Um, do you guys agree with that one that Margaret brings up about concerns about enforcement?
We're all concerned about the enforcement.
Right.
Sorry.
Oh, do we, yeah, do we put that, place that in this concern, in these uh reservations? So that's a valid uh point. Then um validate your um commentary about um amendments to this, which would be the uh list of nuisances clarified with the uh potential immediate suspension after review by the community development director of the instances of the infractions.
And you're the safety of the community.
Any other amendments that you guys wanna add to this? Okay.
Victims compensation. What's wrong with that? The county of Marin has a victims compensation fund. The district attorney has a victims compensation fund to make up to people, to make them whole again when they've been damaged. And there's no other way of addressing their, their loss.
Right.
I don't think it's funny.
Oh, it's just, it's a big mechanism. It's a huge uh mechanism.
And we're collecting money from people and it's going into a general fund. And the chamber of commerce is getting a piece of the action for Fourth of July. I think that the victims of damage or uh, you know, disturbance should be compensated without having to sue. I think if the town has, has inflicted a um, a noisy or disturbance next door to them and made that an allowable way of uh changing a neighborhood, then I think we ought to be prepared to compensate people for that loss.
It's a valid point. Um, I think that the number of infractions that occur throughout the town are numerous. Where do you stop and start, you know, with compensation?
Apply to a victims compensation fund and, and show the damage that they've done and then they're paid for it.
That's a process that is extensive. Um, you probably have better action suing, but I don't know.
I think suing is a very difficult thing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, even in small claims court. And um, and as I said, I think the town ought to step up and be responsible if we're gonna allow people to make money off of their properties.
I don't know. I think it's complicated, but um, other commissioners would have to support that. I think it's very difficult to get down, go down that road.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons I asked about where the violation money goes. Going back to the town, the town didn't get violated.
Um. Yeah, there's.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, it goes toward paying for enforcement, all of that. Um. I don't know. If you guys have any commentary about such a possible mechanism, we talked about it last week, but I think it's really significant um, to do that, create some sort of compensation process. That's just.
I'm reticent to even address it because it's, it's such a big topic and a huge um investment of town resources to even wrap our heads about what that would look like. And then to administer it would be an enormous strain on resources um with making, you know, all the questions about defining that damage has occurred, violation, what is it? What's the right amount? Who makes the call? Field processes, all those things, fairness, equity, all those things. So I, I just, it's, it's a very large issue to grapple with.
And don't you think that this is equally as large that we've just grappled with? No, it isn't.
Okay.
I, I have a question relative to that. Um, uh, and, and I would agree that it's, you know, some sort of compensation fund would be way too hard to administer, but is it possible to put language into something to the extent that the director may um, uh, as part of license renewal or part of the re, review of the thing may request uh uh, the owner uh, restitution, the, provide restitution for damage or something like that? Or maybe you already have that ability. I don't know.
Yeah, I just don't, like, for example, if somebody has a party at night, like, what's, how do you place a monetary value on that disruption to somebody uh, um, on one party, like one loud screech for five minutes versus a huge rain. You know, it just becomes incredibly tough to navigate.
Well, I was talking about property damage and that you can put a dollar value on.
Um, okay, I, yeah, I I'm not aware of, of, you know, claims can be made. Um, again, we'd have to set up a, uh, in my view, we'd have to set up the same legal processes that the judicial system sets up to deal with these sorts of property damage issues. And the town is certainly just not set up to do that. That's why we have mediation, arbitration, courts to deal with those sorts of um disputes.
Yeah, um. I'm gonna go out on a limb and just say that uh, you know, there's, there's infractions that occur civilly, right? In a town, a excavator might dig up a sewer line and it washes out somebody's property. Is the town supposed to uh make that property owner whole? Uh, because they were working on a town-owned sewer line? Um. The, you know, there's all kinds of actions that occur that uh take much more time and it goes through the courts. All of that stuff is subject to uh mediation, litigation, all of that. Um, and there's no fund for infractions by, like you say, you know, maybe you got the license plate of somebody running across your yard um and digging up the whole yard. Um, you have to go after that person. There is no city compensation fund to hold them responsible. Um, you have to en, engage in your own action against that individual.
But here we are collecting money. The town is profiting. And an individual uh who owns a rental, a short-term rental is making a profit and, and making a, a sizable profit. They continue to do it. And so they're benefiting and someone else's property has been damaged. The town has given uh, ha, has allowed this to go on. And um, and the enforcement is not very useful because it's already happened. So enforcement won't do any good. And, and somebody has lost financially lost from, from those, that occurrence. And it just doesn't seem fair to me that other people are making a profit and someone could sustain a loss and not be, not be made whole from it. You know, I don't think it has to be that big a process. When I needed a new sidewalk in front of my house and, and the town had a fund for that. I filled out an application. I got three bids. I took it in. And the town said, fine, go ahead. I turned in the bills and the town uh, helped me with that. I don't know why this would have to be such a big thing. We, if we had a fund and somebody turned in an application and said, I lost this amount of money because I had to replace ten, five rose bushes, then um the town would say, okay, we can make you whole for that. We made money from this guy's license and that guy made money from the rental. Now we're, we're gonna give you something to make up for the damage.
I think they're different, but um, I, I, I just don't say that we can imbue this uh, particular ordinance or, or passing it on with reservations with that accommodation. That would be sending this back to the drawing board. And I don't think we could do that too much. Um, as much as we could argue all night about whether we're laze and all of that, I think we're with this now. And that's a, these guys have pronounced that that's a huge deal and I believe that it is a big deal. So. Um, I think we're down to where we have these options that we've just talked about. The uh, passing this on with the significant reservations. Um, and those are the uh potential conflicts with the housing element. The potential adverse effects to the neighborhoods and the quality of life in Corder Madera and the potential ad uh im, impact on the removal uh, possible removal of housing stock. When with Valerie's amendment uh regarding um penalty and uh revocation of the license. In short, so, you know, we can drill into that, but I propose that we move forward with that or somebody go ahead and make such a motion that we do that at this point. Nobody making, gonna venture to say that, do that?
I'll make a motion that we don't pass uh our recommendation, uh, that our recommendation to the town council is that we do not allow short-term rentals in Corder Madera. That's my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. We can uh take a second and vote on that. Uh, we could then decide whether that goes forward or not, or maybe, Ian.
Um, if you, i, if that uh resolution were to be adopted, it would need to de, detail the reasons for the resolution. And they could be the same four reservations that we've already outlined, but they should be part of the motion.
Uh, could you just repeat?
Of course. So the recommendation has to set forth uh your reasons. So you could resolve to inform the planning commission in writing or um that or actually just as Adam suggested, add it to the current resolution to, I've, inform them in writing that you don't recommend adoption because of the following four reasons. And that would be the four reasons that we talked about previously as expressing serious reservations. That make sense?
Yeah, I understand.
Alright, so is that what you would do?
What she said.
Okay, so that would be a motion on the table if there's a second and then we can vote on it. Anybody wanna second that with the, you know, recommending to not adopt this with the reasons that have been mentioned that we would otherwise adopt as reservations for rec, sending it on to the council?
Died in committee.
Okay, so next option is outlined before us is to um just have recommendations, but we're not gonna do just recommendations. We can send it to the town council with reservations and recommendations. So that's where I'm hearing we are at this moment. So I've stated those uh reservations um, and with the amendment. So someone can make that motion and we can second it if that happens and take a vote. Okay, so option three, um, not uh adopted in any way. We can't get it to committee, so we are left with two other options, right? Am I clear on that?
No.
Okay, so, and um, and we have these options. They're on page here. So option one was to uh recognize the survival of this, right? And what we would do in this case is uh attach the reservations and the amendment. Option two was just recommendations uh regarding amendments. So we have more than that. We have reservations, but we would pass it on to the council. So we need to take one of these steps. Um, and we need a motion to do this.
Uh, I would do it, except I don't have those notes that you have.
Alright, so you would make a motion
Yes.
To uh um, send this to the council uh recommending adoption with significant reservations.
Yes.
And the reservations.
And, and the additional recommendations.
And the additional amendment, right. Okay, so that was the um, potential uh impact to uh conflicts, the housing element, potential uh impacts um, on the neighborhoods and potential impact to the removal of housing stock. And um, there are concerns about potential problems with enforcement. That's actually four things. And then the amendment for creating a nuisance uh uh, license suspension process that was outlined earlier.
Valerie, is that consistent with your language?
I believe so, yeah.
So move.
And I think and uh outline the language she would insert.
Okay. So would you say you have a second then or?
Sure, second.
Alright, so then we have a second. We have a motion on the table, ready for a vote.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Kenny?
Aye.
Commissioner Beshawer?
Aye.
Commissioner Bendel?
No.
Vice Chair Rizzo?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Chase?
Yes.
Chair.
Okay.
Okay, motion passes.
So, there we have it. Um, and do you feel like you have enough to fill in the blanks?
Uh, working with our expertise, yes.
Okay, thank you for the support on this. Um, um. I don't know if anybody else has any closing comments to staff and uh Mr. Brown, but I do feel like he's done an extraordinary job as his staff. We've already said that, so. He's making a hasty exit.
Thank you, Bob.
Daughters and labors.
Oh, yeah, we'll get out of here.
Oh, my God. That's reason. Oh, my God. Okay.
Thank you, staff, by the way. I know this was a tough one uh to go through. And um, did a lot of work and I think it's come a long way. Even though I voted the other way, I really.
No, I appreciate that.
Fantastic job and great recommendations for the town council to review.
And I would second that. And say that I think that um the staff has been very responsive to everything that gets heard and spoken at the meetings. And that's very uh hard to do sometimes and takes a lot of uh balancing. balancing. And it's done very well by the staff here. And appreciated.
Thank you, commissioners. That's very nice to hear.
Yeah, um. Uh, when is this going to council? Next week at three?
No, no. Take a deep breath. No, we'll come back. I think we're looking at the second meeting in October, I believe.
Okay.
Although there's it's a heavy, yeah, that's where we are right now.
That's the one you're going to cover, Dan, for.
All right.
I gotta miss it.
Does the meeting on the twenty six ever happen? Just wondering of of, uh, of December.
Isn't there a meeting? No, usually, yeah. That's all there is. We will follow up and and, um, I'm sure Amy will follow up with, we usually get into the holiday schedules, uh, in the next couple of weeks or next couple of meetings, um, to talk about that and make sure everyone's aligned with what's going to happen as we get into the holidays, which I can't believe is a conversation already. I mean, all right, so, but we're there.
Um, so at this point in time, we, uh, um, still have, uh, time left in the meeting. Uh, do any of the commissioners have any reports on, uh, a meeting?
I do.
Dan, please.
So I attended the, um, town council meeting on September nineteenth. And, um, there were a couple of, uh, relevant things on the agenda. Um, the first thing they took up, um, was a proposal, uh, for, um, renovation, uh, upgrading of the skate park. And, um, there's a foundation that, um, uh, would, uh, is interested in in designing and funding, raising money to redo the skate park. It would be within the same footprint, at least at the current time that they're thinking, and they were just looking for council support uh, to move forward. And the council unanimously supported that and was very excited about the project. And what was really nice to see is there were a number of really young, young people in the audience who were there and, you know, I think it's a good exposure to government and process for them, I hope. Um, the second thing was the, um, uh, reusable food, uh, for dining in. And, um, this was a, uh, a second reading and there was a lot of discussion, almost a little hard to follow. Uh, there were some people who felt, uh, in the audience that why weren't we just following the county ordinance? And it really came down to the BPI content. That's the, um, biodegradable but plastic content and the fact that, uh, our, our, uh, reuse uh, company is, um, certified organic and they can't take that material. It has a longer decomposition period. Uh, and so the, they changed the, that one addition to the ordinance they had was that they allowed BPI if there was no other available product on the market for the purpose intended, which might be coffee or soup or something like that. Uh, and so, um, that was, um, uh, that was approved by the council. Uh, and then, uh, town manager made a report, uh, which I also thought was interesting on uh, his attempts to communicate with the postal service about the status of our post office. And, um, uh, that has been difficult with postal regulations to get information from them. Uh, but that the maybe that they're thinking of, uh, bifurcating their model where they would keep a retail function there, but the back of the house might move somewhere else where they have more uh, more space, uh, to accommodate their their workload. And, um, uh, that might be a good solution for Corder Madera, given some of the concerns of neighbors in that area. Uh, you want to add anything, Adam?
I know that that was a really, that was a good summary. Um, for those that know, I mean, this is, there's a lot I could say here. I mean, this goes back to nineteen sixty eight. Uh, there was actually, at that time, the post office was willing to uh, play by the the zoning rules of of the town. And, um, even though it was a federal government, did apply for a conditional use permit, variance, et cetera, et cetera. And then over the years, that operation has just grown, um, and really out, out, outlived its, uh, facility there and and has caused for the last twenty years, some significant issues around noise and whatnot, um, and and with the increase of trucking as well and packages, deliveries and early morning hours. So we've been trying to work with them, but, um, you know, I'm hopeful that there's a good solution here. Um, I put out a community message on September first regarding this, so hopefully saw that. Um, but it's very hard to get actually, um, real information and accurate information from the postal service itself. We are in the position right now, unfortunately, of having the employees of the post office actually um, tell our community what's going to happen or rumored to happen. And it's led to a lot of speculation, um, in neighborhoods and community and concern, um, rightfully so about what's the future holds. And so uh, I'm doing my best to really try to get real information from the postal service along with Jared Huffman's office. Um, but it's, um, it's a little challenging and I'm hopeful. I've been told that within a couple of weeks, we should have some better information. So it is, um, an important issue to follow. Uh, obviously it has significant implications for our town. I'm still hopeful we get, uh, the win win solution, which is, you know, keep our retail operations, uh, in Corder Madera, which is what I've been told, uh, this pursuit of the bifurcated model, so to speak, is about. And, uh, move those trucking and back of house operations elsewhere. And, uh, um, you know, so that is what I'm hopeful for. Um, and we've made some progress in that in that regard, but it's sort of this vacuum of information. I can't say one way or the other what's happening. So um, it's left us a little bit, um, at the mercy of sort of the information coming out of the employees, um, at this point. So more to come on that, you know, we'll be hearing about it, but thanks for bringing that up. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Adam. Oh, Dan, anything else you want to say about that? Um, okay. And so with that, uh, does the staff have any other notifications for us or any other advisement?
No, I I did just a minute ago. I also wanted to just thank the commissioners for your hard work on short term rentals. This has been over a year of discussion and conversation and reading very, I mean, a lot of nuts and bolts of an ordinance that is not, you know, can be dry, but also very impactful. So you you know, I just want to say thanks to all the commissioners for your time and energy and effort in helping, uh, staff craft a better ordinance here. So thank you. The recommendations to the council as well. With that, now we already, we led with the big news, which is Amy and and so, uh, I'm excited for Amy just to to get working with all of you and and um, yeah, that's that's it.
Well, this certainly was a good introduction for our. Anything coming up, Adam? We have a few projects coming up. Any design reviews or anything? Martha?
Um, I'm turning to Martha. I forget what's next on the agenda. Okay, we'll probably come back with those conversations on another detail oriented, uh, ordinance related to, uh, those design review and and some of the cleanups there and but also some of the regulations around what triggers design review and whatnot. So.
We asked for that one out.
Yes.
That's our fault. Thank you.
What about that old, the, not the old, the Barnes and Noble site? It looks like it's being totally torn down and rebuilt.
And we voted to do that.
The tear it down like that?
It's it's our house, our house, um, furniture store. So, yeah, that's a well underway. Um, yeah. And that, you know, at the toward the end of the year, I think we can do.
Levelled and then built up again.
Their their buildings are planned.
Okay.
Right.
Looks like a warehouse rather than a store.
Not one of those hide and seek things, uh.
That's all I, that's all I had.
Yeah, well, I will say that, you know, uh, you'll bear with me. There are so many communities that are now doing design review that you guys led the way with a few years ago and the, uh, you know, design guidelines, but now they're going, oh, maybe we should put these in place. How do we go about that? You guys got it in place, so. Something to be proud of, yeah.
All the way for Brookline, Massachusetts, right?
Anyway, well, with that said, let's adjourn. Good night.